Good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the July 13th, 2021, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Wiens for an invocation, please.
Everyone, please bow their heads. Loving God, Creator of all times and places, we thank you for the gift of summertime, the days of light, warmth, and leisure. Thank you for the beauty that surrounds us everywhere. We look, the multi-colored flowers, the deep blue of the sky, the tranquil surface of the bay, the laughter of children at play, people strolling in parks, families gathered around picnic tables, and the more time to spend with family and friends. As we open our eyes and ears to the landscape of nature and people, open our hearts to receive all as a gift. Give us that insight to see you as the divine artist. Help us to realize and appreciate that you are laboring to keep all in existence. Warm our souls with the awareness of your presence. This is what we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) One nation under God, indivisible, with a degree of justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiens. So at this time, we need to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve. The agenda is submitted.
Have a motion and a second that we approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries four oh. Excuse me. First thing on the agenda is an update from Dr. Polsky.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Good morning.
So overall, good news for the moment. As always, it's going to be tinged with a little bit of caution as we move forward. So you can see over the last month, the number of cases have been dramatically lower than what we were seeing, certainly through the winter, but also when we had that bump in cases when the Alpha variant showed up over the springtime. So you can see, week by week, we hit an all-time record low the previous week of only three cases, nudged back up to 12 cases, the weekend ending the seventh. Because as, and we're only talking every two weeks or so now, so just as a reminder, we do cases from Thursday to the following Wednesday to avoid statistical lack of reporting over the weekend, so we can get consistent numbers. The only thing I'll point out is that the number of tests that are being done have dropped locally, and that also reflects what we're seeing statewide and nationally. Part of that is likely that less people get sick in the summer in general, and we also suspect that less people are kind of coming forward to getting tested. So I don't want the perception that there are only, have only been 12 people with COVID in the county over the past week. Those are the number of people who've been tested and have tested positive. I think what I am most happy about throughout this is, as you take a look toward the right side of that slide, over the past four weeks, there has not been a single case of anyone over 75 in Calvert, and this past week, no one over 65. Certainly, you know, we all know that we've seen the highest number of hospitalizations and deaths in that age group. The one group that has jumped up a little bit over this past week is the 28 to 35-year-olds. And I will say that currently, the only person who's hospitalized in the county is someone in that age range. So when we take a look statewide, again, this is the previous week, the number of cases were 519, and then the number of deaths the previous week were 14. Current hospitalizations, and I have to prepare this slide a little bit ahead of time, so these are numbers as of this past Friday. So up on the slide is 113. Currently, as of this morning, that's risen to 134. The number of people in the ICU has risen from 34 as of last Friday up to 45. There statewide have been a 55% increase in cases from last week to this week, and the percentage of hospitalizations, ICU admissions, is up about 20 to 33%, depending on which category that you're looking at. And that is certainly reflective of the Delta variant that I'm sure you've heard about on the news, gaining traction in Maryland. Across the country, actually, I'll get to Delta in just a moment. So I did want to touch on June statistics for one very important reason. So statewide, there were a little over 100 deaths due to COVID across the state. Two of those deaths were Calvert residents, and the next line is what's most important, that all the deaths in Maryland during June occurred in unvaccinated individuals. And so I would say that we had 102 preventable deaths in the month of June, and that it's not just that there are 3.2 million vaccinated in Maryland, there's none of whom died from COVID during June, but when you think about it, the vaccination rates in seniors is close to 90%. So if you, if those people are all unvaccinated, then we would have close to 10 times the number of deaths just from that age group. Plus, you have to factor in the number of circulating cases would be much greater, so the probability of people getting infected would be higher. And so vaccines are dramatically decreasing the number of deaths that we're seeing both locally, across the state, and certainly across the country. So just touching on the Delta variant, I kind of jumped ahead of myself a little bit, so it's actually not the predominant strain at this point. It's 40%, as of today, 40% of the cases in Maryland are from the Delta variant, 50% from the Alpha or the UK variant, and then the other 10% are a variety of the either original strain or the other variants that have popped up. The importance for the Delta variant is that studies, and these are mostly out of the UK, where the Delta variant showed up about a month before it became more prevalent in the United States, that the Delta variant is at least twice as contagion, as contagious as the original strain of COVID, and it multiplies at a much faster rate. So what they're seeing in studies is that when they do cultures and then look for the number of virus particles, that the average person with Delta variant has about 1,000 times more virus particles in their respiratory tract as people with the Alpha variant and with the original strain. And they're becoming symptomatic, on average, about four days after infection as opposed to about six days. So the transmission rate, instead of taking six days to go from generation to generation, it's four days. So we're seeing a much faster propagation with this virus strain. They're also seeing the highest infection rates in children, so children between 5 and 19. And so we're looking at sort of a different playing field with the Delta variant than we were with certainly the original strain, and even with the Alpha variant that we were dealing with last spring. Studies have also shown that with the Pfizer/Maderna vaccine, that a single dose of vaccine is only about 1/3 protective against, against the infection, but if people complete the two-dose series, it's about 90% protective. And when you look at hospitalizations and deaths, then you're looking at somewhere between 95 and 97% protection with two doses. I don't have data up there for the Johnson &amp; Johnson because I haven't seen any studies. The AstraZeneca vaccine, which is not available in the U.S., but is the closest to the Johnson &amp; Johnson, and that is the most commonly given in Europe, shows about 60% protection against the Delta variant. And I'm going to point out that over 1,000 Calvert residents have only received one dose of their vaccine who are now eligible. There are now more than 28 days since they got their first dose. So it's really important for all those people to go back for their second dose, even if it's been three or four months ago. They only need a single dose, they don't need to start the series all over again. The Health Department is trying our best to individually call everyone who has not gotten their second dose, so we can make sure they go from 33% protection up to 90% protection. And then, just to finish up, statewide, we are still doing great with our seniors. We're still second highest percentage in the state as far as people 65 and over. Among teens, we're seventh among the 24 jurisdictions. Now, I will point out that at this point, only 45% of those 12 through 17 have been vaccinated in the county. So seventh is good in rankings, but that still means obviously 55% of adolescents are still completely susceptible to the vac, to the virus. And then, when you look at all eligible residents, we rank 11th, which is where we've been for a few months now. So if you subtract out the 65-year-olds who are doing really, really well, and you just look at the 18 to 64-year-olds, statewide, 29% of all Marylanders in that age range are unvaccinated, but in Calvert is 40%. So our 14, or 18 to 64-year-olds are lagging significantly behind others in the state, and that means we have over 23,000 adults who are completely unvaccinated, and then if you include in everyone under 12 is unvaccinated, plus remaining adolescents, we're looking at 42,000 people in this county who are still susceptible. I know that some of them have had COVID, and they are less likely to get infected, but with the Delta variant, we're seeing less natural protection from a previous infection, and so those people don't have the same level of protection they would have if we were back several months ago. I'm anticipating, given what we're seeing right now, unless our vaccination, vaccination rates pick up substantially over the next couple of months, that as we head into fall, and almost certainly, we're going to see a rise in transmission of the virus, we're probably going to have somewhere around 30,000 to 35,000 people susceptible, and, you know, we will see outbreaks, and that will also have consequences in our schools. So I'm not going to go through the charts, I just have them up in case anybody at home wants to actually look at the wrong numbers. So it's broken down by 12 to 17-year-olds, all adults, and then 65 and over. And then I would just remind everyone that for anyone who needs a second dose, or for anyone who has not yet gotten vaccinated, that you can log onto our website and directly schedule an appointment. We are still running, I think, four days a week right now at our mass vac site, and most, if not all, the primary care practices in the county are offering vaccines, including the pediatric practices. So I would encourage people to call their personal doctor or nurse practitioner to schedule an appointment. And certainly, as I will continue to reiterate, if people have concerns, have questions, because all sorts of rumors fly on, on social media, don't take your health advice from a website. Take your health advice from your doctor, take your health advice from your nurse practitioner, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this point.
So, so Dr. Polsky, there's been some, on the news the past couple of months, about different side effects. So are the side effects related to these vaccines any different than side effects to any vaccine that's been administered over time?
For the most part, no. So yesterday, people, the FDA, they are great scientists, they are horrible communicators. The, so the, the big, you know, it's going to lead on the news, a warning about Guillain-Barre syndrome. That's a known potential for multiple vaccines. The numbers are, for flu vaccine, it's about, instance, about 1 in a million, maybe 2 in a million. But the biggest cause of Guillain-Barre syndrome is virus infections. And I also say campylovirus infections, which is a foodborne, food poisoning like salmonella. But the flu is up, when people get the flu, they're a much, much higher risk of getting Guillain-Barre syndrome than they are from getting it from the vaccine. I could not find good numbers for COVID, and that's because this is still kind of a, things aren't regimented as far as reporting. For vaccines, they are. But I did see a report from back in March, specifically about Guillain-Barre syndrome for people who've had COVID infections. And in the case series, which was looking at 50 people who had Guillain-Barre, they were predominantly male, and almost all of them were 50 to 76 years old. What the FDA came out with its statement yesterday was predominantly male and predominantly over the age of 50. So the people who are at most risk of getting Guillain-Barre syndrome from COVID are the ones who also, who have some potential there. I will say, by far, the risks of getting COVID infection way, way outweigh any risks from the vaccine itself. And, you know, I would look at it, maybe not the best example of all, but ambulances, there's a risk that ambulance could get into a crash on the way to the hospital, but your benefit from getting in that ambulance, if you have, you know, if you're at serious risk from complications, way outweighs. Ambulances save, at minimum, hundreds of lives every day in this country. I don't see them slapping warnings on the ambulance, warning, this ambulance may get into, you know, into a crash. That there's a clearly defined risk with COVID, it way exceeds what we've seen from, from the side effects, and to your, certainly to your point, Commissioner Hans, there is nothing that is completely side effect free. Every antibiotic we take, every diabetes medication, there's always potential for liver issues or kidney issues, but again, you know, the statistics speak for themselves. We are, you know, across the country, we're saving thousands of lives every week because of these vaccines. We're not seeing thousands of people die from any of the side effects that have been reported.
Sometimes, if you watch on the television, the commercials for medicines, not even vaccines, just medicines, a 30-second commercial. One day, I timed one, and it was 25 seconds of warnings of side effects. So, you know, there's always going to be, you know, those cases, but as you say, we need to remember that, you know, the, and weigh the risk and the benefits.
Absolutely. And, and again, that discussion for you specifically, you know, the, the risk benefits for a 16-year-old are different than the risk benefits for a 60-year-old. And, you know, we've seen slightly different side effect profiles with different vaccines. So, you know, if, if it was, if I had a patient who was a 30-year-old female, I would not recommend the Johnson &amp; Johnson, even though those blood clot risks in young women were very, very unusual, we didn't see them at all in young women with Moderna or Pfizer. And, and so you can't have that personal discussion on a website. I can't have that personal discussion as I talk here, but everyone has the opportunity to have that discussion of what is best for them with, again, with their personal providers.
Any other questions?
Just briefly, Dr. Polsky, the mass vac site on Skipjack, what is the plan for dismantling a timeframe?
At, at the moment, we plan on keeping it open until Labor Day. My, my most important concern at this point is that for students returning to college campuses who need vaccination, we know that some of them do not have a personal physician. I want to make sure that they have an avenue that they can get their vaccines. After that point, I think part of it depends, is the FDA going to approve the vaccine for children at that point? You know, what is the real need for the drive-through? We may end up phasing it out after Labor. Again, you know, we've all seen how unpredictably COVID has evolved in all sorts of ways. So at the moment, I'm not ready to say we will close after Labor Day, but there is that possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Polsky.
Thank you all.
So the next item on the agenda is proclamations, and the first one is a Buy Local Week. So Kelly Swan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Kelly Swan, Agricultural Development Specialist, Economic Development, and I am here to represent Calvert's farmers and producers, and presenting to you Ms. Debbie Jones, owner and operator of Wendy Lilo Farm, and she helps oversee the Calvert Farmers Market Association. And today, we have for you some lovely Farmers Market Association tote bags and a card inside. And the card inside explains the Buy Local Challenge, which is July 17th through the 25th, and that encourages all Marylanders to buy one item locally sourced or grown, and here I'm going to say one locally, Calver County sourced or grown item throughout the week. And on, on this card, so in the, in the past, it's been, I'm a little bit more active, but there's a scavenger hunt that has five items, where you can go to the farm, farm stand, or farmer's market. One of the items, take a picture with the local producer, and there's five other action items, and if you submit it into BuyLocalChallenge.com, and with a hashtag, there's swag involved that you could win.
Ooh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie, did you want to say anything?
Not really. I just, I've been involved with the farmers markets for many years, and, you know, I hope that we can, you know, continue to provide this service, you know, by the farmers, to the farmers markets. This year's been, you know, last year was very difficult. You know, we had the hospital, the Calvert Health staff was phenomenal helping us. We had drive-through most, well, we still have a drive-through option, but they were, they were phenomenal helping us. And so we provided that service. This year, North Beach has started, and we've combined, sort of combined forces with North Beach, which is wonderful, because that was always one, you know, it was always kind of them against us, and now it's, it's we. We've been working together with Stacy to get SNAP and EBT benefits accepted at all the markets, and hopefully we're close. But, you know, everybody asks, well, why are the farmers markets so small? And it's because I can't get the customers to come out. And they're like, well, you know, if there were more vendors, then we would come out, but the vendors are, you know, if I don't make any money, I can't come out either. So, you know, we need everybody to step up and, you know, help support local, because it's very important. That's, you know, that's our heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. So every year, I probably say this, but the history of the Buy Local Challenge, it started here in Southern Maryland, was started by the Southern Maryland Ag Development Commission, and when I was Secretary of Agriculture, I stole it and made it statewide, and now the governor hosts a picnic every year to celebrate Buy Local Week. And we're so blessed in Calver County to have so many great producers. You know, you can go to a farmer's market, you can get your meat, your produce, honey, flowers, of anything you need, you can get from your farmer's market. So, you know, for this week, we're challenging you, but our expectation is that all summer long, you're going to support our local farmers, whether it's at a farmer's market, whether it's at their individual produce stands. We have a website you can go to that lists all the opportunities in Calver County, where you can buy directly from the producer, you can pick it yourself, or you can order it, it'll get delivered right to your door. There's no reason not to buy local in Calver County. And we need to support it. There, you know, a lot of those are smaller farmers, they need that opportunity to sell their product retail to generate the profit enough to stay on the farm. And, you know, we hear all the time about preserving farmland. Well, it doesn't do any good to preserve farmland if you don't preserve the farmer, and this is your opportunity and your best way to support local farmers and keep those farms, farms. So that's my pitch for the day, and you all can come up, and I'm going to read a proclamation, and we're going to take a picture. So, "Whereas, Calver County agriculture, aquaculture, forestry, and wild harvest, watermen provide high-quality, locally grown, and harvested products for the citizens of Calver County. Whereas, local farmers, foresters, and watermen link the past to the present and are important to the county's economy, environment, and quality of life. And whereas, support for Calver County's local producers and harvesters is found through its citizens' desire to retain our farmland and waterways and their choices to purchase fresh, locally grown, and harvested produce, which contributes to higher nutrition, better taste, less waste, and less pollution. And whereas, Calver County is committed to promoting local aquaculture, agriculture enterprises, and calls upon all citizens to choose products produced in the region's farmland and waterways each day, but especially during the last week of July. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of July 17th through the 25th, 2021, be known as Buy Local Week in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that we encourage all citizens to be mindful of the role agriculture plays in their lives, to acknowledge the importance of agriculture and buy local whenever possible, given under our hands and seal this 13th of July, 2021."
Commissioners, I did want to let you know, we are super excited that the courthouse is back open to the public, but one of the challenges was we weren't able to get the sweet corn in, so we do have five dozen ears of sweet corn for you, but we'll be, we'll be following up after the meeting and getting that to you.
Hurry now, we got to be able to get sweet corn within a quarter hour. I'm on that, sir.
So, next item on the list under proclamations is Commissioner Hart.
Now, my understanding is it's Natalia, but Mom and Dad say Natty? Is that okay? All right, so you drew the short straw with me in reading, so, hey, you want to come on up? How you doing this morning? So me and your mom talk a lot about this, because my boy plays travel ball too, so I'm sure, and Mohammed, you can understand, the 5:00 in the morning, making the peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, and where are we going, and, okay, where's this place, and all this, and it's tough, isn't it? It is very tough, and I tell you, why don't you tell me a little bit, how did you, how did you get interested in gymnastics? Did it just look fun, or?
Yeah.
I mean, how did you know you were going to be this good? Because this says you're pretty good.
I guess I just practiced hard to get where I am.
Now, how often do you practice a week?
Five days a week.
How many hours a day?
Four and a half.
Wow. Isn't that something?
Good thing your mom's rich.
My brother, his daughter does competitive gymnastics too, and it's, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not easy at all. You really have to have a gift and a talent, and then to work it, you know? And I'm going to have both of you, how about Mom and Dad pulling up here? Because really, it takes the whole team, trust me, I know, it's going through the checklist. Zach, you got your bat, right? Zach, you got the ball, you know, you got your gloves, all of a sudden, who is this little cutie over here? And what's your name? What is it? Zane? Well, good morning. How are you? Good?
Not as shy.
Not shy at all. Well, like I say, this is really to the whole family, because it takes over, you get up early too and go, don't you, and the long days, and, mhm, yeah. So, okay, well, this is to the whole family, and I am very proud to read this. I know it is not easy. What a great accomplishment. So it says, "Whereas the youth of Calver County represent our most treasured resource, whereas the personal activity, excuse me, achievements, accomplishments, and service of young citizens deserve recognition and praise of their elders. And whereas, Natty, resident of Port Republic, attends the Capital Gymnastics National Training Center in Burke, Virginia..." Think about that drive every day, Mom and Dad, boy. She is a 7th grader at Calvert Middle School, and Natty participated in the 2021 Virginia State Level 8 Gymnastics Championship, receiving first place on uneven bars with a score of 9.65. First place on the vault with a, with a 9.0, and with a score of 37.45 placed first all around in her age group. And whereas, Natty was then invited to participate in the 2021 Region 7 Level 8 Gymnastics Championships in State College, Pennsylvania, with a score of 37.625, placed third all around for her age group among the states in Maryland, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, West Virginia, Delaware, and Virginia. You only left a couple of states out. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners presents this proclamation as a tribute to Natty's diligent work and determination and her outstanding commendable accomplishments. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that Natty is congratulated on achieving first place in the uneven bars, first place on vault, first place all around in the 2021 Virginia State Level 8 Gymnastics Championships, and third place all around in the 2021 Region 7 Level 8 Gymnastics. Be it further proclaimed, by this action, we have faith in the ability of today's youth and assume their roles in society, given under our hands and seal this 13th day, July 21, signed by all four Commissioners." Am I going to see you in the Olympics?
Maybe.
Mom and Dad, you want to say anything? Dad, you got to say something, because you, I know, how well do you use waves and all that other stuff?
I've used it all.
Yeah.
So to, to answer your question, you know, on a, on a normal basis, I'm here talking as Parks and Recreation Director, but today, I'm talking as Mom. And this girl right here, she's amazing. So she's been doing gymnastics since she was three years old, and she has never missed a beat. It is always, it's never, oh, I'm too tired for practice. too tired for practice, or I don't want to go to practice today. It's always excitement and always wanting to learn new skills. And every day on the, on their drive home, I get a call to say, this is what I did at practice today. And I'm like, I have no idea what you're talking about, what this skill is, but great, I'm glad you're doing it well, but I don't know the names of it, so send me a video. If, if there's no video, it hasn't happened.
Now Dad, how scary are you watching some of this? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we, we really appreciate this, and just for, for other kids out there and, and other folks that are participating in, in sports. And it's not just speaking as the Parks and Recreation Director, but youth being able to participate in different activities is, is definitely something. You know, you start off at the recreational level, and then, then you're able to, to move on to some of these, these other levels to, to go, to go further. She, she has a goal of, of going and doing gymnastics in college. And for a 12-year-old to already be thinking about college is, I wasn't thinking about college at 12 years old. So it's, it's definitely something to strive for, for, for all kids to participate in sports, especially starting at that recreational level.
Come on up, guys. Come on up. A big high five. Love it.
Next item on the agenda, Commissioner Wiens.
Ms. Ruth, or Marlene, please, come forward. And I'm going to be a little unconventional, and I want Major Reese to speak first, and, and also Colonel McDowell. And then I'll read the proclamation. Pleasure before business, right?
Yes, well, thank you all for having us here this morning, recognizing Marlene on her retirement. She is currently our longest-serving correctional deputy in the facility. So, what with that, I mean, 31 years, where, where do you start? But I, I'll just say thank you to Marlene for always supporting the administration at the detention center. She's always been behind the decisions, the actions taken by the administration. She's always supported the mission, the objectives, the policies of the agency. 31 years of that, you can't ask for more than that. She's, she's an outstanding employee, comes to work with that smile and that positive attitude all the time, which in our environment, we work in a negative environment, having a positive attitude goes a long way. In my time that I've been there, I, I haven't seen her showed up to work in a bad mood ever. So, thank you, Marlene, thanks for all you do. Her informal leadership will surely be missed amongst the, the young people at the detention center. She brings a great wealth of knowledge, a great attitude to work every day. So, I appreciate it. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Marlene, you know, on, on behalf of Sheriff Evans, the citizens of this county, myself, just want to thank you for your dedication, commitment, sacrifice, setting the example for all these years. And just congratulations on achieving that. I hope you have a great retirement. But just because you're retired doesn't mean you can't come back and visit because you're still a part of the family. So while you're sitting home, or out shopping, or doing whatever you're going to be doing in life, don't forget us and please come back around. Can I get a hug? Thank you.
Ms. Marlene, do you have any family members here today you'd like to introduce?
Welcome. I know you're both very proud. And, and Ms. Marlene, I'm going to put you on the spot. What do you plan on doing after you retire? What's the first thing you want you to do?
Sleep in.
Sleep in. That's good. That's good. That's great. Well, ma'am, please come forward. I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas, Master Corrections Deputy Ruth Marlene Shields will retire on July 30th, 2021, after dedicating 31 years of faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Coward County and the state of Maryland. And whereas, Master Corrections Deputy Shields' admirable career began with Coward County Government on July 23rd, 1990, as a correctional deputy. She was promoted to Correctional Officer II on July 23rd, 1991, to Correctional Officer First Class on August 9th, 1993, and Master Correctional Deputy First Class on June 24th, 2019. Throughout her career, Master Corrections Deputy Shields received numerous awards reflecting her outstanding work ethic and job knowledge. She received recognition for her outstanding performance from every administrator she served under, and was awarded Corrections Officer of the Year in 2000. And whereas, Master Corrections Deputy Shields has displayed and commanded respect as a corrections deputy, where she worked professionally and tirelessly in charge of a population of inmates on every shift. She has performed every facet of the jail's operation efficiently and safely. Her span of control ranged daily from intrastate transport of prisoners to lockup duty within the local courts. And whereas, Master Corrections Deputy Shields' work within the facility was only part of her dedication to the citizens of Coward County. Her commitment to the community included many local charities, but she will always be remembered by her coworkers for her allegiance to the American Cancer Society and the Relay for Life Team she co-founded. Due to her relentless fundraising, the Jailhouse Rockers raised monies which entitled them to be in first place for several years in the local chapter. Her dedication to raising funds to fight cancer is legendary, and her constant efforts undoubtedly helped patients, scientists, and medical professionals, both in the community and across the nation. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Coward County presents this proclamation as a tribute to Master Corrections Deputy Shields' outstanding accomplishments and hard work during her distinguished career, thereby recognizing this remarkable individual who devoted herself to improving the quality of life for all Coward County citizens. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Coward County that the appreciation of all Coward County citizens is hereby extended to Master Corrections Deputy First Class Ruth Marlene Shields on her retirement, after 31 years of reliable and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Coward County joins the community and her coworkers, family, and friends in conveying best wishes for a long, healthy, and happy retirement, with plenty of rest, and with continued success in all your future endeavors, given under our hands and seal this 13th day of July, 2021. God bless you.
So the last item under Proclamations, Commissioner McConkey.
Do you have anybody here from Technology Services?
Wes.
And is Wes, can come on up, please? Amy? Hey, Wes.
Yes, sir.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, I'd just like to say a few words. So I haven't known Wes very long. I'm Amy Lawson, the Director of Technology Services. And Wes has been on my team for, for as long as I've been on the team, which is about a year now. But Wes has always brought a joy and a light to everything that he does. And his work with the Civil Air Patrol, his, his dedication to the cadets, it's absolutely inspiring. Wes, you've always made everyone in the office feel your joy, your happiness. You bring smiles to the faces of everyone that you meet, and we're really going to miss having you around the office. Congratulations on your retirement.
I have a proclamation here for Wes Lepre, retiring on July 16th, 2021, after dedicating more than 16 years of faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Coward County and the state of Maryland. His career began with the Department of Technology Services on December 6th, 2004, as Systems Analyst Supervisor. He then became the Records Management System Administrator on April 2nd, 2018, where he served until his retirement. And his devotion runs beyond his professional life. Wes has an adult son who is dedicated to and with whom he is looking forward to spending more time with. He also has dedicated himself to United States Civil Air Patrol and has thoroughly enjoyed the numerous decades he has been a member. And the Board of County Commissioners of Coward County presents this proclamation as a tribute to Wes' outstanding work performance during his career, thereby recognizing this remarkable employee who has dedicated himself to improving the quality of life for all of Coward County citizens. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Coward County that the appreciation of all Coward County citizens is hereby extended to Wes Lepre on his retirement after more than 16 years of reliable and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Coward County joins the community and Wes' coworkers, family, and friends in conveying best wishes for a long, healthy, and happy retirement, with continued success in all his endeavors, given under our hands and seal this 13th day of July 2021.
I have one natural-born son who's in the Air Force flying C-130s for the Air Force, who came to Father's Day two weeks ago, one of them. He's now at his new station. Following him up is another of my sons who is, I'll call him my Asian kiddo because he was next door major to my son. So whenever my son was at my house, he was there too. And I've got six of them around the country. So civil patrol has been away from me to get back to the community. A lot of the things that we did together, it's kept me going because working with young people is infectious, infectious in a good way.
It is, it is. Because you keep your toes, you know, you start thinking, you're not, well, you know, you start thinking, you know, I'll never be out of touch. And then like some of the young guys at my school, I'm going, so what does that mean? How did you do that on that phone? Yeah, it is, it is amazing that the, the, the get back you get from, from kids, you know.
So that's what I'll be doing. He arrived at 4:30 this morning, my Asian kiddo. So we'll be doing stuff this afternoon and the next couple of days. I'm grateful for working with the county. They helped me raise my son. Working in PC at various agencies, you take the telebus going up and down toward four. It takes about 45 minutes each way. So there's hours of time that you can't save. So I'm grateful to the county for putting up with me and giving me things to do. One of the things I got to do was work with the, the county Employee Recognition Committee, one that Mark is, was really a big part of in the early days. And so they, they said that they would like me to be the retired member of the meeting. So I get to keep working with, looking at and talking with the faces I've worked with for the last 15, 16 years. So most folks would cry when they retire. Really, I'm not, because I'm sort of staying with the family and just get more for time.
You need to give him the list of all the openings of all the board. We'll put him to work.
Thank you very much.
I'm trying to get him on YouTube, you know.
So the next item on the agenda is public hearing. So Director Cook.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me today is Rachel O'Shea, zoning manager.
All right, we're official. Go ahead.
The purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public an opportunity to comment on the proposal to allocate a portion of the recordation tax revenues to finance land preservation efforts by the county and to seek the board's approval. This hearing has been properly advertised as required by state law. Those who are attending in person and wish to speak must sign up on the speaker sheet on the podium to my left. For those attending virtually, if you wish to speak, you must call in and enter the meeting code that was presented on the website and listen until you're called upon to speak. When the floor is open for public comment for this hearing, staff will call the names from the sign-up sheet first, followed by those attending virtually. And if you want to speak, you need to press star nine to be put on hold to speak. Virtual speakers will be identified by the last four digits of their phone number and unmuted when called on. Speakers will be asked to state their name and address and provide comments. As individuals, be allocated two minutes. Those representing a group will have five minutes. And when you're called upon by your last four digits, you hit star six to unmute yourself. At this point, I'll turn it over to Rachel to read the memo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
TDR Committee Recommendations: Allocation of Recordation Tax Revenues Background. The Board of County Commissioners requested to reconvene the Transferable Development Rights TDR Committee that originally met back in 2015, when Text Amendment 15-02 for the TDR Sliding Scale was proposed and adopted. In 2020, a new texted amendment, 20-02, was proposed to change the sliding scale TDR requirement to be more equitable in terms of housing type and therefore an increase in some of the requirements. However, the text amendment was not accepted to move forward through the public process. The BACC requested the TDR Committee review the TDR program and make recommendations for the BACC to consider. The TDR Committee developed a package of recommendations that if enacted together would reinvigorate the TDR program and increase participation. The recommendations were presented to the BACC in a work session on March 9th, 2021. were presented to the BOCC in a work session on March 9, 2021, and staff returned to the BOCC for an additional work session on May 25, 2021 to discuss TDR bank funding options now referred to and will be named the TDR Reserve. The BOCC directed staff to move forward with the TDR Reserve as a pilot project utilizing the land preservation fund balance as seed funds, and the BOCC selected to reinstate the recordation tax increase adopted in 1999 from $3.30 to $5 of increase of $1.70 for every $500 collected in recordation fees to fund the TDR Reserve. The option selected was also one of the TDR Committee's recommendations to restore full funding to the land preservation programs of the county. This reinstatement will fund the land preservation programs at an average range by looking at the last 10 years of revenues from 1.7 to $3 million. This is an increase from the past several years of land preservation funds allocated from the general fund alone that ranged from 500,000 to 1 million. Staff recommends that after public comment, the BOCC take action to close the record and sign the resolution.
So at this time, has anyone signed up to speak?
There are no speakers on the line.
No one has physically signed up to speak.
Okay, no speakers. Do you have any questions?
Do we need to check the audience?
Any questions?
It'll be hard to get used to again.
I don't see any.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the record and adopt the resolution.
Second?
I have a motion and a second that we close the record and adopt the resolution. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four oh. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I just want to reiterate to the public, this is not an increase in fees. This is just codifying what was declared as the reason for the increase in 1999 was to fund land preservation. So our action today just codifies that requirement that this fee increase will go to its intended use moving forward. So it's not a new fee increase. Just want to make sure we're perfectly clear about that. So again, thank you. So the next item on the agenda under awards, Lorraine Joyner, somebody from staff, Rachel? Ashley? Somebody. Ashley? Okay.
I was wondering why she was sitting in the audience.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll read the agenda, I mean not the agenda, the memo first. So for background, the Employee Recognition Committee was created on January 1, 1982. The ERC's mission is to recognize employees for years of service, to create and maintain a positive work environment, to create and maintain a culture of recognition, and to motivate high performance. The Employee of the Month Award is just one of those ways that we achieve this mission. Discussion: The Employee of the Month Award acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance. The categories for recognition are quality of work, respect of fellow employees, effectiveness of public contact, contributions towards improving organizational morale, quantity of work, and/or actions that improve the public image of Calvert County. So the conclusion is, the ERC is pleased to announce that Jenny Plummer-Walker, Long Range Planner, Department of Planning and Zoning, was selected to be the Employee of the Month winner for June. So, beyond that, I do want to insert, anyone can nominate a coworker for this award. We encourage employees to check out the ERC webpage on the county internet or contact Lorraine Joyner, ERC Chair for information. I do have some information in regards to who nominated Jenny. So Jenny has been leading the updates on the Prince Frederick and Dunkirk Town Center Master Plans. The Prince Frederick Master Plan update kicked off in January 2020, and shortly thereafter, Jenny and the Long Range Planner staff had to find creative ways to keep the public engaged in the process as COVID-19 restrictions were put in place. While the public meetings went virtual, Jenny continued managing the update process, keeping citizens on topic during the meetings, all while remaining diplomatic, respectful, and unruffled. Both citizens and county staff were impressed with Jenny's consistent work ethic and professionalism in all interactions. Jenny was also the department's representative on the Calvert County Complete Census Committee. The committee exceeded their goal for the Census 2020. Jenny and Dr. Suda Haley kept the BOCC informed on the census progress with monthly updates, and while this committee was time-consuming, Jenny never used it as a reason for not meeting project deadlines. She is truly an asset and goes above and beyond for the Department of Planning and Zoning and Calvert County Government as a whole. The ERC is delighted to join the Board of County Commissioners in recognizing this exceptional coworker for being a positive support to citizens, for maintaining the integrity of county vision, making services more accessible, and for demonstrating what we all know that Calvert County is an awesome place to live and work. So I do know there's a handful of people that do want to speak. So we'll give Mary Beth an opportunity, as well as, I know Mark wants to say something.
Thank you very much. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. I can't say enough nice things about Jenny. She is the ultimate professional. She comes to work every day, prepared, ready to get working, energizes her team in long-range planning. Her historical knowledge of the department makes my job easier. She's been with the department since 94. Is that correct, Jenny? Yes. And so, yeah, she's been with the department, I think, almost longer than maybe one or two staff members. She's passionate about the county, and that passion shows in her work on a daily basis. She gets to deal with a lot of difficult citizens, as we all do, but she does it with grace, and as was said, read, she never gets ruffled. She's organized, and her attention to detail is fantastic.
Snow.
That's the one time I saw Jenny ruffled, but not that ruffled. So I just wanted to say thank you very much, Jenny, and I know Dr. Haley's here, and Mark wanted to speak, but thank you for what you do to make the county a better place to work and live.
We just got to hear that story today, Jenny.
I've written my remarks because I would have had to have a volume to do this. So just bear with me. Mere words like amazing and visionary do not go far enough to describe our Jenny. As our Census 2020 champion and Calvert County's Complete Count Committee Coordinator, Jenny's creative ways to meet the Census count challenges through her exceptional virtual ingenuity, especially during the pandemic, fueled our productivity and mission accomplishment. Together, we organized our county's resoundingly successful State Census Forum in collaboration with Maryland AARP President Jim Campbell, who invited Majority Leader Hoyer, Senators Carden and Van Hollen, and Maryland Secretary of Veterans Affairs George Owens, with other state and census heads, to thank and further galvanize our tri-county committee members. Jenny was the engine who, with her extraordinary initiative and tireless efforts, helped us reach our undercounted residents. She inspired and motivated our Complete Count Committee members to make Calvert County's percentages the best in the state and most of the country. We are extremely fortunate and blessed to have Jenny working with us in our Calvert County. Thank you for letting me do this.
Morning, Commissioners. Mark Willis, County Administrator. I will say this, I have a personal philosophy that at any given time in life, you're either a teacher or a student. I'll be quite honest, when you're in Jenny's presence, you're just always the student. And true statement, you know, when we're doing the comp plan or town center master plan, or any of a plethora of other documents that we have to update, if she doesn't know it, she's going to learn it very quickly and figure it out, and then she's going to become the expert that then very calmly walks through that. So very quickly, since others didn't hear the snow story, I would get quite hyper and get very aggressive at times, and I know it's not my nature, so. But what I will say is, between Jenny and Mary Beth and a couple others, they came up with a code word for me that was supposed to calm me down. And anytime I heard the word "snow," I was supposed to just mellow out. So we're in a town hall-type meeting, and we had agreed ahead of time that we were going to, whoever would best fit the particular question would answer that question. Well, a question came out, and I was getting ready to stand up because I knew that it was a contentious question, and Jenny, I think biting her teeth, looked at us and said, "Snow!" And we had never seen that, and we were, we didn't even know what to do. We started holding hands and trembling in the front. But I guess the point is, is that if you have to step up, she's also capable of defending our stance. So we, obviously, we could not do it without you. So I don't know how we're going to keep you forever, but that's the goal. Thanks, Jenny.
So before Commissioner Hart, can I have a second? Jenny, you and I have worked on issues for decades. I look like it, you don't. You're very blessed. And I understand your mother's in the audience. We want to thank you for allowing her to come and be with us, because she's such a pleasure. As they say, she's the ultimate professional, no matter, I've never seen her flustered. I never, I wasn't there when it snowed. But just want to say how great it is to have you as an employee and dealing with the public on the issues that you deal with. You know, I hear about those issues. I never hear complaints about you. So we're just so thankful. And the chair would entertain a motion to ban her from retirement. And so she can't go anywhere, but we're so lucky to have you, Jenny, and just appreciate you so much.
So moved. And real quick, Mike, I've known Jenny for decades too, and, you know, she's always a lady. So that's all I have to say.
Well, almost everything's been said. And it's so funny, Jenny, because, you know, before it come up, you know, I'm thinking of all our past, you know, experiences and stuff, and they're saying all the things I was getting ready to say, you know, and which makes me know I'm right. And I got to tell you a story. So, you know, I am probably the most greenest person that ever won this job. I can't imagine there was anybody greener than me. And I had won, but I wasn't sworn in, so you're sitting in the cheap seats just watching. And I watched one of our staff members just get destroyed by another elected official. I was so offended. Just, I was like, you know, they work for the fight. Why are you going after this person? And the person handled it with class. And I was so offended, I said, you know, I would never do that, nor could I watch someone do that to staff. It always bothered me. And then poor Jenny draws a short straw. Every public hearing almost I go to, and I'm watching, and, you know, and it goes without saying, you have my utmost respect. You really do. And there's no script. Pounding, the question comes in, and Jenny fires it off. I can't remember what I did yesterday. How you remember all these things. And I was really taken back because, you know, some people, when they walk in a room, you go, uh-oh, this is going to be trouble. Jenny walks in, quiet, very respectful. You don't know she's in there. And then she starts speaking, and you see how well she knows her material, how prepared, you know. Some, there's some people say, you know, somebody's lucky. You know, a lot of times, it's not luck, you're prepared when a situation comes. Jenny is always prepared and allows her not to be frustrated because, you know, normally, when folks come to public things, it's not because they're happy. Facebook puts a blurb, and you go, oh, 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 I'm coming up there, I'm talking about that. They're going to hear about that. Facebook said it. Very rarely, especially in today's world, do we take the time to truly research it, call the office, call that department, and say, hey, you know, I heard this. Is this a, mm-mm, I'm coming out, and I'm blasting. And I wasn't raised that way. You know, I was raised to talk, you know, as obviously, but, you know, when I was raised to ask questions, what I didn't understand, you know. And I highly doubt you get a lot of that. I see it when it comes there. I mean, I know on a normal basis, you get the barrage of things, but I can't say enough. Epitome of class, Jenny. You really are. And I need professional, and I, you have all our respect, and I truly mean that. And with all of that, you have this flag. And as Commissioner and other always said, the most important thing is the check. And thank you for everything.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you very much. I couldn't do this without the great team that's in Planning and Zoning and the great team. I don't want to name every department, but I, you know, all the departments and the county attorney's office, we can't do this without you. It is a team effort. Everyone provides such wonderful support. The community leaders that I get to work with on the census are just outstanding, they're top-notch. I will not be here for the 2030 census, so I will make sure all the files are up to date.
Really? Don't say that.
I will not be here working for the 2030 census. But it was a pleasure working with Dr. Haley and all the others, and the community is just wonderful. Calvert is such a special place. I'm so pleased and honored to work here. Thank you.
You almost think it's retirement, we all talk so much about it. Thank you very much. You made us proud. I'm remembering that for you.
I have a motion on the floor. I just don't have a second.
There was a second, but there hasn't been a vote yet.
All in favor? I have a motion and a second on the floor that we ban Jenny from retirement.
The county attorney's trying to figure out how he's going to validate that vote.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is appointments. Deputy Director, Administrator? What? Oh, sorry. So the next item on the agenda is Department of Finance and Budget, the Distinguished Budget Award.
Kelly has it.
It don't matter.
You can do it.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sharon Strain, Acting Director of Finance and Budget. And I'll go ahead and read the memo. The subject is the FY21 Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Background: Each year, the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, a major professional association servicing the needs of 18,000 appointed and elected officials, elected local, state, and provincial-level governmental officials and other finance practitioners evaluates the county's current fiscal year budget for how well it serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guideline, and a communications device. If this document is rated at least proficient by the criteria with those categories, the entity will receive the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. As the letter reads, "This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and represents a significant achievement by your organization." For the 20th year straight, we are pleased to inform you that Calvert County has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which is granted to the Finance and Budget Department, as we are designated as being primarily responsible for receiving the award. There are many employees who work diligently every day to ensure the county maintains the highest quality in financial budgeting. They take great pride in what they do, and it shows in the results. Every year, we strive to make the budget document more useful and meaningful to all county government and its citizens it serves. Fiscal impact: There is no fiscal impact to the county government. Conclusion: We recommend the Board of County Commissioners recognize staff for this achievement during the meeting on July 13, 2021.
So I just want to make sure that the citizens out there heard you in your comments that this is the 20th year in a row that the Calvert County Department of Finance has received this award. So, you know, it's one thing when we all sit up here and talk about how good staff is, and in my eyes, you know, Department of Finance is the most important department we have because it manages all because it manages all the money. And at the end of the day, everything revolves around money. And so this is just a public acknowledgement of the great staff that we have and all the work that you all do every day to make sure the finances of Calver County are in order and keep us in line. So on behalf of all of us, we greatly appreciate what you all do for us and the citizens of Calver County on a daily basis, for 20 years straight, I might add. So congratulations.
I'm going to have staff come up and introduce themselves and we'll come up front.
Good morning, Veronica Atkinson, Finance and Budget. I'm the Capital Projects Analyst.
Good morning, Laura Kent, Senior Budget Analyst, Department of Finance and Budget.
Good morning, Beth Richmond, Deputy Director, Finance and Budget.
Good morning, Janice Marcellus Ward, Executive Administrative Assistant, Finance and Budget.
Good morning, Mary Layman, Grants Coordinator, Finance and Budget.
Good morning, Rachel Griffith, Accountant III, Finance and Budget.
So now, the next item on the agenda is appointments. Deputy Administrator Versalo?
Good morning, Commissioners. We have six rounds of appointments this morning. I'm going to walk you through all six. The first one is for the Commission on Aging. Staff is requesting a motion to appoint Terry Z. Long and Harriet Yaffe. Following those appointments, you'll have three vacancies.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to reappoint Terry Long and appoint Harriet Yaffe.
And a second.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 3-0. Let the record show Commissioner Hart's out of the room, please.
All right, your second round is for the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Staff is requesting a motion to appoint Dawn E. Schonkweiler. You'll have two vacancies remaining after this appointment this morning.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reappoint Dawn Schonkweiler. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Number three, you have appointments to the Calver County Family, Family Network. Staff is requesting a motion to appoint Kirk Martin as the citizen member.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reappoint Kirk Martin. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those opposed say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. Let the record show Commissioner Hart's back, please.
All right, appointment number four is to the Calver County Wellness Committee. Staff is requesting a motion to appoint Portia Ackridge, Heather Maggert, and Melinda Gaines. You'll have six vacancies remaining following these appointments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we appoint Portia Ackridge, Heather Maggert, and Melinda Gaines. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Okay, appointment number six is for the Social Service Advisory Board. Staff is requesting a motion to appoint Kimberly Cicero, Sandra Mariska, I apologize for that, and Patrick Daly, Kimberly Foltz, and Denise Plater. You'll have two vacancies following these appointments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we reappoint Kimberly Cicero and Sandra L. Mariska and appoint Patrick Daly, Kimberly Foltz, and Denise Plater. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0.
All right, and your final round of appointments will be for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Staff's requesting a motion to appoint Joshua Smith and Robert Tetrault.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we appoint Joshua Smith and Robert Tetrault to the Parks and Rec Board. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. That completes our appointments. Next item on the agenda is old business, Department of Finance and Budget, Sharon.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Sharon Strain, Acting Director of Finance and Budget. Today, the topic is the August 2020 Tropical Storm Budget Adjustment. Background, in August of 2020, Calver County was hit with a powerful tropical storm. ISA East caused damages in excess of $7 million. The Department of Public Safety has applied for assistance from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, and considers, and considers a 75% reimbursement very likely. A public hearing was held on June 29, 2021, 2% and received public comment. Discussion, these dollars are significant and should be reflected in our 2021 budget, and the likely reimbursement should be accrued as revenue. The budget adjustment required a public hearing because it's in excess of $150,000. Fiscal impact, there are still many unknowns, and these estimated numbers will be adjusted as the work is completed. FEMA allows us until August 4, 2022, to complete the work. The attached sheet, Exhibit A, shows the estimated county expenditures on the storm of $7,570,570.23. And the expected reimbursement from FEMA is $5,677,927.67. The difference of $1,892,642.56 will be paid with the favorable variance in the record, recordation tax line. Conclusion, staff request the Board of County Commissioners adopt and sign the resolution for Budget Adjustment 345.
Motion?
Mr. President? I'll make a motion that we adopt and sign the resolution for Budget Adjustment Number 345.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we approve and adopt resolution adopting Budget Adjustment Number 345. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the Consent. There are two items, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, RFP 2021-062-D, Consulting Services for a Calver County Land Preservation, Parks, and Recreation Plan. Item two is Department of Public Works, Division of General Services, Position Reorganization. If there is no objection, those items will be adopted and as presented. Next item on the agenda is new business. Department of Public Works.
Good morning, gentlemen. I have a quick memo to read for you here.
Morning.
Morning. Maryland, Carrie Doll, Director of Public Works. From the Maryland Department of Agriculture, we received a cooperative agreement. The background, Department of Public Works received a cooperative agreement between the Maryland Department of Agriculture and the county that provides cooperation in the control of, and eradication of noxious and certain invasive weeds for the period of 1 July 2021 through 30 June of 2022. Discussion, the Maryland Department of Agriculture is requesting the signed cooperative agreement be returned to their office. A fully executed original agreement will return to DPW's files. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusion recommendation, DPW recommends the Board of County Commissioners sign the cooperative agreement. The signed agreement will be mailed to the Maryland Department of Agriculture for their files. That's all I have, gentlemen. What are your questions?
So for those that aren't aware, there is a law in Maryland that requires control of noxious weeds. Most are non-native invasive species, such as Johnson grass, mile a minute, fragmites. There was a TV story this week about how fragmites has taken over the creek at Cower Cliff State Park, and DNR is removing it. So this, this agreement, we're getting ready to sign, just says that we're going to do our part to control those noxious weeds that are listed under the state law, so.
Yes, sir.
Very good, so the chair would entertain a motion?
Move to approve, sir.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to authorize the Board President to sign the cooperative agreement. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Department of Public Safety. Jim is on.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Jim, Jim Erickson, Division Chief for Fire Rescue EMS. We have apparatus grant for Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department. Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department is requesting a $373,000 fire rescue apparatus grant for the purchase of an ambulance. Discussion, in order to apply for this grant, Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department adopted by resolution, formal procurement procedures, procurement committee standards, and contract administration policies. Apparatus specifications received the approval of the Chief's Council, the Fire Rescue EMS Association, and the Fire and Rescue Commission. Finally, the company has agreed to a promissory note through which the grant funding would be repaid through service over eight years. The county will receive a security deed of trust that will complement the promissory note. The current apparatus has a service agreement in effect through January 1, 2024, with a balance due of $77,187.50. In order to proceed with this procurement, the department requests that the Board of County Commissioners forgive the $77,187.50 balance on the current agreement and release the security interest. Proceeds from the sale of the current apparatus are required to be applied to the purchase of a replacement apparatus and/or equipment. The Fire and Rescue Commission's Apparatus Replacement Inspection Committee evaluated this apparatus and are recommending its replacement. Fiscal impact, the $373,000 is requested is included in the 2022 FY capital budget for the purchase of the ambulance. Conclusion recommendation, recommend the B O C C forgive the $77,187.50 balance on the current agreement and release the security interest, approve the Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department's apparatus grant request for the replacement of ambulance 37, and authorize the Board President to sign the fire rescue apparatus grant agreement.
So Jim, could you explain a little bit about why the ambulance is being replaced two years ahead of schedule?
Commissioner Hanson, in this particular case, the, each of these apparatus have a life expectancy. And it's based on a formula that they've come up with. And particularly for an ambulance, it's, it is eight years or 120,000 miles. And the notes are depreciated over an eight-year period. Solomon's is our busiest department in the county. They run approximately 28% of the incidents in Calver County. Their ambulances are on the, on the road 24/7. And I don't know that Solomon's would ever be able to keep an ambulance eight years. So unfortunately, this is the, the one drawback of, of, of the one department, one type of apparatus that this comes up with is, is with Solomon's is ambulances. But the apparatus are reviewed and determined to be replaced by the inspection committee. They're not just replaced as a schedule or anything.
Thank you. I just wanted citizens to know why we replace them ahead of schedule. So the ambulance didn't hit the timeline, it hit the mileage limit.
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, okay, that's all. Any other question? Motion?
Move to approve, Mr. President?
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we approve forgiving the $77,187.50 balance on the current agreement, provided that the proceeds of the sale of the unit are applied to the purchase of its replacement and release the county's security interest. Approve and authorize the Board President to sign the Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department's apparatus grant request for replacement of ambulance 37. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. Next item under new business, Department of Public Safety, Jim?
Commissioners, background, the St. Leonard Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company 7 is requesting a $767,000 fire rescue apparatus grant for the purchase of an engine. Discussion, in order to apply for this grant, St. Leonard Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company 7, adopted by resolution, formal procurement procedures, procurement committee standards, and contract administration policies. Apparatus specifications received the approval of the Chief's Council, the Fire Rescue EMS Association, and the Fire Rescue Commission. Finally, the company has agreed to a promissory note through which grant funding would be repaid through service over 20 years. The county will receive a security deed of trust that will complement the promissory note. The current apparatus has a service agreement in effect through July 1, 2026, with a balance due of $53,194.20. In order to proceed with their procurement, the department requests the Board of County Commissioners forgive the $53,194.20 balance on the current agreement and release the security interest. Proceeds from the sale of this current apparatus are required to be applied to the purchase of, replacement apparatus and/or equipment. The Fire Rescue Commission's Apparatus Replacement Inspection Committee evaluated this apparatus and are recommending its replacement. The $767,000 requested is included in the FY 22 capital budget for the purchase of the engine. Staff recommends the B O C C forgive the $53,194.20 balance on the current agreement and release the security interest. Approve the St. Leonard Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company 7's apparatus grant request for the replacement of engine 7-1, and authorize the Board President to sign the fire rescue apparatus grant agreement. In, in this case, Commissioner Hanson, the.
You read my mind.
I was just a step ahead of you, sir. In this case, the, the specifications or the standards for the replacement of these apparatus, consideration for replacement was 25 years when this apparatus was purchased. In 2011, I believe, the standard was changed to 20-year consideration. And this apparatus was brought in, inspected by the committee, and deemed to be in need of replacement inspection, replacement.
And Jim, I understand the system, as you know, but I just want to make sure the citizens understand, we're just not willy-nilly replacing equipment before its time is up, so it's the only reason I ask.
No, sir. And in fact, we actually, even though they're scheduled for replacement, we say it's scheduled for replacement review. The apparatus are all brought in a year ahead of time and reviewed by a committee that actually gets underneath of them, bring them down to fleet maintenance, put them up on the lifts, and really evaluate them to determine their need for replacement.
Right, and there are cases where we rehab instead of replace, so we get additional time out of those units and save some dollars. So it's not always just ditch them and move on, so just so.
Absolutely, and in some cases, they're actually deferred and kept for longer. That's not a minimum service life, right?
Jim, what do we do with the old units that they get rid of? Because I know now, a lot of the fire departments are, are buying back fire engines they had from 30 years ago and restoring them type of thing. Are we, are we keeping them for the future, like for something like that later on, you know, 30 years from now?
The departments that would be getting older apparatus are, are looking for them for their historic value, I mean, to the department. Most, all this apparatus is, is sold, and the, the proceeds of that sale have to be. Most, all this apparatus is sold, and the proceeds of that sale have to be placed against apparatus or equipment. A lot of times, departments in much, much more rural areas will be able to stretch a little bit more time out of these apparatus.
And it's call volume. So as Jim says, the rural departments don't run as many calls, so the equipment sits more, and for them, it's an economic savings. So for us, it's business. But call volume is just crazy. I mean, we talked about this before, and it's the reason we have paid personnel now and four or five stations running antelances, you know. I've mentioned this before, when I belonged to the fire department, we ran hundreds of calls a year. Now they run thousands of calls a year. So, you know, equipment's not going to last as long, you know, the issue of replacing the fire departments comes up, you know, they're not that old, but the problem is they weren't designed and built to handle the amount of equipment that we have today and the amount of call volume, so wear and tear comes into play. So it's a challenge for a growing population. Any other questions? None, the Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we forgive the fifty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents balance on the current agreement, provided that the proceeds of the sale of the unit are applied to the purchase of its replacement, and we release the county's security interest and approve and authorize the Board President to sign the Saint Leonard's Fire and Rescue Company Seven's apparatus grant request for the replacement of engine seven one. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four oh. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So the next item on the agenda is public comment. So now that the courthouse has opened, individuals can come in in person, but we are still going to allow phone comments for those that watch online and can't physically, or don't want to physically come in. So at this time, Mr. Attorney?
There is one caller on the line, and if that caller would like to provide comment, please press star nine. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number. You will be asked to state your name and whether you're speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group.
Caller two eight zero three, we are ready to receive your comments. Please state your name and address whether you are speaking as an individual or a representative of a group.
Hi, good morning. My name is Joseph Cormier, and I'm speaking as an individual.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Joe Cormier, and as a parent of an elementary and middle schooler, I know we only have a hundred and eighty days of school, and I know we need to spend a hundred and eighty days learning not just reading, writing, and arithmetic to be college and career and trade ready, but have the social, emotional, critical thinking, and interpersonal communication skills required to be a positive contributing member of civil society. We had enough issues before the pandemic from seclusion and restraint, emotional regulation, and mental health crises, drug and nicotine addiction that are still and will continue to be issues when we return to the classroom. We need parents and guardians and community stakeholders to partner with the schools in a positive way as we return to the classroom in the fall. What we don't need are the Tucker Carlsons and Sean Hannitys of the world creating the boogeyman of the guise of CRT. Please don't be fooled by their flim-flam. What we need to do is teach the Constitution. We want our kids to know our whole history, and that is what truly is American. Focus instead on helping CCPS open schools full-time in the fall, safely transporting seventeen thousand students to and from school every day. Focus on getting sports and music and arts programs restarted safely to enrich all our students, not just ones who can afford their own personal transportation. Focus on helping CCPS continue to build out and maintain their cadre of teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, behavior specialists, and all the important staff members who work every day to help our students reach their potential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe we have Dr. Curry scheduled to come in July the twenty-seventh to talk about the upcoming school year and what that looks like, so.
Yes, sir, we do have him on the agenda.
Any other callers or individuals that would like to speak?
There are no other callers on the line.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hart?
Hopefully, everybody had a nice July fourth, enjoyed the fireworks that were down there. Me and Commissioner Hanson attended a flag waving, excuse me, flag raising ceremony, and that was about it.
Thank you. Commissioner McConkey?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, if everybody could say a prayer for Commissioner Hutchins, who went into surgery this morning at five AM, and hope that everything goes well with that. And we probably won't know anything for three or four days, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Weems?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I want to wish you an upcoming birthday.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, I believe it's Saturday, right?
Well, happy birthday.
Yes, so.
The big sixty-six.
Wow.
Very good, sir.
Does Elvis have a special song for sixty-six? Or is that only, we only do the increments of ten, is that what that is?
Just acknowledgement.
Just acknowledgement, okay.
And I wanted to thank County Administrator Mark Willis, in addition to all of his other duties. I don't know if you noticed, Mike, but he squashed a wasp earlier.
I did. I did see that out the corner of my eye.
I thought it was a drone coming across the road, but he took it down.
Do you remember the one I took down?
I do.
Standing on top of the desk?
Yes. Yes, that was flawless, sir. Sir, it was in order to prevent the commissioner from having to do that job again.
But it kind of looked planned because it came right at him.
It was very Miyagi-ism. I mean, it was very like pow. It was very zen-like.
I'm looking for the remote control later.
And that's all I have, sir.
I think Terry still remembers that. What is he doing?
So as Commissioner McConkey mentioned, Commissioner Hutchins is going through some things right now, so we do ask all of you to keep him in your prayers. Earlier today, we celebrated Bi-Local Week, starts on July seventeenth, it's a wonderful day, and runs for a week, but we want to encourage all of our citizens to support our local farmers all year long and purchase money products as you can from our local, not just our farmers, all of our businesses. You know, we want to support our local economy. And I didn't, hadn't mentioned earlier, but the administrative judge has opened up the courthouse, so the public is now able to come in and attend the meetings in person. So we greatly appreciate her doing that because for a while, this was a pretty lonely place. So we like seeing the public in and like to hear from you. So other than that, I don't have anything else, so the Chair would entertain a motion for executive session.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, like to make a motion to enter exec session pursuant to general provisions, Article subsection three dash three oh five B one I to discuss personnel matters of employees and appointees over whom it has jurisdiction. Subsection three dash three oh five B three to discuss acquisition of property for a public purpose and related matters, and subsection three dash three oh five B twelve to discuss an investigative proceeding on actual or possible criminal conduct.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four oh. Everyone have a great day.